Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. Opening up the meeting tonight, the prayer is going to be given by Alderman Taylor.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Good evening. I take special honor and privilege to introduce a young man that I've been knowing for, I know, forty years. He's a man of God, and I even was overseas and I ran into him overseas as well. And he's just a wonderful guy, and I can talk on and on about this young man. He's older than I am, but I call him a young man, but I love him to life. At this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Ronald Scott of Born Again Ministry to render a prayer for the city.
Thank you for this opportunity. Let us all pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we invoke your presence this evening. We thank you for blessing us with another day. You tell us in your word, oh God, pray for those in leadership. So Father, we pray for the great leaders of this great city. Bless every leader and person present here with your wisdom. Anoint the tongues of every speaker, quicken their spirits and minister to their hearts as they address their budget and other agenda items this evening. Be glorified in the midst. Speak loud and speak clearly that these are people may hear what you're saying in this season. We give you all the honor and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray and give thanks. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to flag our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna have a roll call this time?
Alderman Blackiston?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Shiebel?
Here.
Mayor Outlaw?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman White?
Alderman Odom?
Here.
Okay. At this time, before we get into the requests and petitions of citizens, I would like to welcome a very special friend of mine, Henry Faircough, from Salemburg, North Carolina, who I was served on the appraisal board back in the nineties for five years with. And Henry, I'm just so tickled you're here, and thanks for thinking enough to come visit with us. At this time, we're gonna go to item number three, requests and petitions of citizens. Are there any citizens that would like to come forward at this time and appear before the board? Seeing none at this time, we're gonna go to item number four, conduct a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2016-17 budget. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. The recommended budget for fiscal year 1617 was distributed to the board on April 26, 2016, at our regularly scheduled board meeting, and budget workshops were conducted on both May 3 and 4. The proposed budget has also been made available to the public for inspection, and this public hearing has been noticed as required by state statute. This is an opportunity for the public to participate in the budget process by sharing their comments regarding anything that's in the budget.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna open a public hearing. Purposes for anybody that would like to come forward and ask any questions, make any comments about the proposed fiscal year 2016-17 budget. Would anybody like to come forward?
Bob Griswold, 4167 Run. My question is, I guess, on the electric department, and I think I may already know the answer. We've sold off the electric department within this past year. I'm just wondering about the continuing expenses through the electric department and the debt. Thank you.
Sure, I'll go ahead. Just a real quick general. First off, Bob, we haven't completely sold our electric department. We only sold the ownership assets of the electric distribution, which is from the coal plants and the nuclear plants through electric cities that we had ownership in. In the sale of those assets, the remaining debt is $33 million that the city is responsible for.
Okay. Anybody else like to come forward at this time, or the public hearing section of this, and make any comments, questions?
Mayor, my motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion to by Alderman Odom, second to by Alderman Taylor? Kinsey?
Yeah.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey. We have a motion, a second, close the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, all opposed the same. At this time, we're gonna go to item number five, further discussion of fiscal year 2016-17 budget. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As promised at our budget work sessions that we had, as well as an opportunity for the public to make comment, we wanted to afford the board an opportunity, should they have received any comment, or should you have any more questions regarding the fiscal year 1617 budget, this opportunity to do so. If there are no major items of discussion, we will plan to bring this before you at your May 24 regularly scheduled board meeting.
Alderman Kinsey?
I would like to review the travel for the board as well as staff. I'd like to review that again if you can, to bring back further discussion.
Do you have specific questions you would like to talk about tonight? If we, however the board pleases to do this, if it's something that can be handled tonight, that will keep us from having another two-week layover for budget approval? Are there any really difficult decisions that are questions that you have concerns about, or do you want to do that now?
Well, you're gonna have to really look into it, so you're gonna have to go to the pages. I don't know if everybody has their books loaded tonight, like, you know, I'm just gonna give you an idea, like, on page 317 or 320, you know. Like, in this item here, it went from $2,000, $5,000, $20,000. We only get, like, $1,000, $1,200 for travel, and this year, it's bumped right on up. And this year was noted, wasn't caught. And I don't know how many more are like that in the budget. So I like to see what can we do to become more.
Were you comparing the fact that the Alderman's travel has been capped for several years, but that the cost of the billing department or the Fort Tutton has gone up? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, along with that. I mean, we all need to further the learning ability to perform your job as an Alderman, as elected official, to learn and do the things, take his city to the next level.
And would you, are you more concerned with the fact that the city Alderman's budget allowance is not where you would like it, or are you more concerned with the billing department portion of it being too high? Or are you concerned with both of them?
It's both. It's both. I mean, what are they learning that we're not learning, that, you know, that would help us to do a better job? You know, education is the thing that takes you to the next level to perform your duties, and that's what I'm looking at, basically. And I'm just trying to figure out how could we work this thing and see what we need to do to make it right.
I'm gonna kind of do an exploratory here. I think that some of your concerns on the billing end that the manager can answer, I would just like to say that I think in the past, on several occasions, I know when I first got on the board, we were doing a lot of traveling, and I don't know that, I don't know that the public nor the board felt that the taxpayers' money was being used wisely, particularly with the recession period that happened. And so from that, when things got tough, we had some furlough days that we actually had to furlough employees, which I think is pretty embarrassing for a city to have to do. The board of Alderman at that time saw fit to cut out, cut out travel, not only for the board of Alderman, but not only for the electric advisory board, but also they cut back staff. I think something that's worked well on the Alderman end of it is that on occasion, I think I have given money out of my allotment for others to travel when justifiably it was something that was of interest to the overall board and the city. And I wonder if, I think that I'm more than willing to do that to help another Alderman. But at the same time, I think at any time there was something during the year that was very important that a particular board member go to, that maybe the board, if it was presented, that it could either be approved by, at a board of Alderman meeting, and that way you wouldn't have to increase the board travel allowance. That's just, that's just an idea. Mr. Stevens, if you would comment and justify the travel allowances on the staff, if you don't mind?
Sure, I'll do my best here. I may ask for JR's help, since this is under his purview as the finance director in utility business office. But I think what we've got to also keep in mind is, you know, we are looking at a lot of new implementations in the utility business office as far as the Exeleron potential CIS system, new users and new functions of the CIS system. There's 27 people that actually work in that department, and I think he's distributed a lot of this training amongst a lot of those people. The largest cost is one that specifically is for the business office manager to go out to Austin, Texas, the APPA Customer Connections Conference, New CIS Software Users Conference. I will say that APPA is very difficult, and I think John could probably comment on this as well, that there's not really a local North Carolina chapter of that. It's really more of a national Public Power Association conference. And oftentimes, those are held all throughout the United States. I think the last Lyman's rodeo was in Minneapolis, is that correct? And then the previous year, it was in Las Vegas, or Phoenix, or Sacramento. So they're all over the place, and they really don't have a lot of local options because the Public Power Association providers are nationwide. So I would say that that's probably one of the ones that's like a larger travel cost. A lot of those are accumulated, like payment services rep down to the bottom, there's four of those, it's $300 apiece, so it accumulates up to $1,200. But it's really about APPA webinars and training opportunities at Craven Community College to teach our employees how to function better at their jobs, do their jobs better, provide better customer service. There's stuff in here about meter tech career development programs, so that we're teaching, especially whenever we're getting ready to implement the new AMI technologies with the meter techs. So all of that stuff weighs in, and as we're implementing more of that, we're moving more from a meter reader who goes out there and reads numbers off a meter, to actually knowing the technology and how to implement the AMI technology, so that we have the smart capabilities and reduce the cost to our customers.
I agree with you. A lot of the trainings that I'm speaking of is, like you say, is all over the country. And I just feel that, you know, being elected official, you should be able to attend some of these conferences, that you would be able to bring back the information that would help to move your city forward. And that's the term that I'm actually speaking from. It's not that I want to travel, travel, or anyone wants to travel in particular. You know, I just would like to be informed and equipped for the city that I serve. That's all, that's, you know.
Alderman Kinsey, you know, and I know where you come from, actual last year was 2936, and then this year, you're just going up to 20,900. Is that?
Yes, yes, yes. I was just, you know.
It's like an $18,000 increase.
You know, it's something that, you know, it wasn't, you know, brought up.
So the question I would have, Mr. Stevens, is this a one-time event in the ensuing 2017-18 budget? Are you anticipating it being 20,000 again, or will they be through with the training, and that's gonna come back down to 8,000 or something?
Well, I would anticipate that the total number would stay closer to $20,000 figure, based on what I've seen historically, there was very little investment in training of the staff at the UBO, for whatever, for whatever reason, you know, whatever the case may be. I know that we do have some newer staff in the UBO, so we're trying to get them up to speed and keep them, get them to understand what, you know, what we're doing in terms of, you know, billing, as the city manager said, AMI projects and things like that. We've got a lot of things going on over there. You know, I would anticipate that it would stay up a little bit higher. One of the things I would do and intend on investing in my staff is going to some of the users' conferences for some of the softwares, because, for instance, the Exeleron software this past year, this current fiscal year, I sent the business office manager to the Exeleron conference, which aided us in the decision process of going with Exeleron, but also assisted us in making sure that we are, we've got good quality contacts for assistance with implementation. One of the contacts that was made was with Memphis Power and Light, which we did not previously have contacts with before, but they've, but they've been very generous in providing some time with us to assist us in going through our implementation. So it's not just, it's not just the training, but it's also the contacts that we make nationwide to assist us in making sure that we're doing our job better.
And just like one of the leads that I'm a member of, they want, they have contacted the manager as well as the clerk and bringing a conference here. And I hear very well what you're saying, but we're not coming directly to what I'm trying to ask here to get my point across, you know. We need training too, you know. It seems like I'm being skipped here. I'm just trying to get a clear understanding here, you know what I mean? It's a lot of moving parts, and I want to be a part of the moving parts here. And that's all I'm trying to get my point across. And let me give you an example. Alderman Taylor went to this conference due to, what was that, Texas something, 911, and when he brought that information back here to the city, the chief was able to implement that program here. I'm pretty sure you're familiar with that. So that's what I'm trying to get my point across here, where the board can get a chance to review and understand all the moving parts here. You know, everything seemed to be the same, but I want to keep it right on the same level.
Alderman Taylor?
Well, first of all, I think we need to separate Alderman travel from training that somebody needs to do their job. And there's 27 people in the utility office, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you divide it out, it's $740 apiece. Not that that's the math you should use, but generally, it's not unreasonable. They have to, so that's one issue. I think the other issue is the Alderman travel, you can address separately, but putting the two together, I don't think is the way to go. I think we discuss the utility training and settle that, and then if you want to discuss the Alderman travel, we can discuss that. But these people need this training to do their job. This is, this is hands-on training about software, how to be a better customer service rep, this kind of thing. This is what they need to do their job for the city. So that's a separate issue from our kind of training that goes to conferences, et cetera. And I think we should address them, but just separately, not put them together.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes, I've been quiet for the last several conversations in reference to this, and I'm just not gonna sit back any longer. As she said, the business utility office go to training to do their job. We are elected officials, this is our job. We got to get training knowledge to do our job. We run the city. And some of the members on the board are in several different committees that has conferences throughout the state, throughout the United States, throughout North Carolina, throughout the United States. And some of the people on the board, their community runs smooth. Some of them don't. As Congressman Butterfield always say, some of us have a very demanding community, and I'm one of them. So going to conferences where you can fellowship with other councilmen that have demanding cities and been through some things that I'm going through can teach me, and I could do my job better as an Alderman for the city of New Bern. One of the conferences I go to, it's $565 just for registration. $250 a night to stay, and it's a five-day conference. If you do the math, $1,200 is gone. There's other conferences throughout the cities. One of my committees that Alderman Kinsey was relating to about the 911, I'm on that committee. They're in Kansas City right now, because they city sends them to different conferences, so they can get the knowledge and bring back to their city to make their city run. Some people might not need it, some people might not go to conferences, but some of us need to go to conferences to get information to make our communities better. So, yes, we was at 2,000 when we got on board, then it went down and down, and now it's at 1,200. I go to one conference, my money's over. I don't need to be borrowing money to go to conference to better my job, so I can better the city. That's unfair. There are some positions in the city that's got more traveling money than elected officials have. Something wrong with it. Like the military say, jets don't pass the make sense test. If we're leading the city, and you giving us peanuts to go to training and get education, something wrong with it. There's a lot of money being spent elsewhere, but you don't want us to be better ourselves, so we can better the city. And that's what we need to consider. Yeah, everyone needs training, but we need training. Our training costs more. Alderman White, Alderman Kinsey, him and I, the three of us on the board, that the city pays for every year. But if we go to that conference and this conference, we gotta borrow money from someone else to go to. We should be able to afford, you don't have to go. You'd be afforded the opportunity to go, and we need to be afforded the opportunity to go to conference to better, not ourselves. We're sitting up here to better the city. And that's all I have to say. That's my two cents, let the food lines happen.
I want to clear something up myself. I'm not trying to compare one organization and the city and what I'm trying to do. I'm not trying to do that. I just want to be equal. I want everything to be fair. I'm gonna go here again. I was asking the manager when he was public works director about different sections of the city, how do it look versus over here, and he said it needs to be a change. And if you ignore something, it does not take care of the maintenance of anything, it falls apart. And before you know, now if it gets taken care of, and it's neglected. And, and I just feel that as a leader, you have to pay attention. That's all I have to say, sir.
Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir, Mayor, just a couple of comments on the travel and training for utility business office. My only concern with that is there's about seven or eight items listed that seem very generic, and they may be there just as placeholders. You may not know specifically what that training's going to be, but you're trying to plan for your staff and have the funds available to do that.
Yes, sir.
That's my only concern with that. As far as some of the other comments, I'm absolutely, for those that know me, I'm not somebody to my own horn, but I'll just say that I think you can view this job two different ways. You can view it as a job, or you can view it as public service, which is what I view it as. I decided last year that I wanted to attend the conference. Someone recommended to me to attend a specific conference. Mr. Stevens and myself went. It was in Seattle, Washington, and I think Alderman Shiebel may have shared $200 with me, but that trip cost about $3,800. I've exhausted my $1,200, I believe $200 from her and the rest of it, I'll pay out of my pocket. If there's something that I feel is gonna benefit me from a professional development in this position, then I don't mind paying for that out of my pocket. That's my two cents.
Along that line, Alderman Odom, the October 2017 APPA Customer Connections Conference, you've got business office manager of $5,500. Is that, how much that would cost to go to that?
Yes, sir, that's, that's an approximate amount. We're asking for some flexibility there, because, you know, one of the directions that I provided to him was that we do want to send him to a users' conference related to, related to possible new CIS software, or going to that, going in that direction. So while we did use the generic titles associated with that, we, you know, those conferences can be fairly expensive, particularly if we end up in Austin, Texas for that APPA conference.
And so is that like a five-day conference, or?
I don't recall off the top of my head, sir.
Sir?
I don't recall off the top of my head. It is usually more than just a couple of days.
I mean, is that like a $2,500 application fee or something, or is it, I mean, it just sounded like a lot of money, maybe $500. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, you're also talking, you're also talking about flight, hotel stay as well, associated with that. Like I said, we tend to stretch these, stretch the budget as far as we can. You know, for instance, I was in a training on, yesterday actually, that cost about $400. However, we have the entire, we have like four or five people that were watching that one training, so we're trying to stretch the.
I just, I just think, back on the Alderman travel, I just think a similar of a compromise is that, you know, everybody on the board, it's, it could possibly be more hardship on some people to go to a $500 conference than others. And my thought would be to have, like, stay the same on the $1,200 allowance, but have a $5,000 general line item there, and for special meetings that the board just sees fit, that an Alderman needs to attend something just like this conference you're talking about here, be it urban, national urban design meeting, or whatever else that the board see fit to appropriate $1,800 and send Alderman Kinsey, or Alderman Blackiston, or somebody like that. That, to me, would be, and I guess we could probably do it with a line item, but I think, I mean, with a amendment, budget amendment, or something like that, but I think that having it there makes it, makes the opportunity available more so than the, than it not being there. But does the board have any comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I recognize and kind of share Alderman Kinsey's concerns of the single year increase from a relatively simple amount to a much larger amount in one year. That gives you some concern. But I will also admit that this is a public document that we have before us, and in there, each department has listed by line those training items and those conferences or meetings or whatever that are projected for attendance. I would say that the governing board should follow the same guidelines, so that our constituents know where it is we're taking our taxpayers' money and where we're going, and just have a very good reason for going there. I don't, I don't question what somebody chooses to do, but I think the governing board should be treated the same in terms of outlining what it is we want to do during a fiscal year with our budgeted funds.
Okay, so at this time, if any Alderman wants to make any kind of a motion, see if you get a second, and then we can take a vote on any changes to what we talked about anybody would like to try to make.
I'd like to make a motion that we do this training and travel equally. That is fair, you know. We're here to do the right thing, guys. I mean, you know, my God, if you got to go to training, let's set it up where you go and get the right training that you have to get to run your city. That's the bottom line, okay?
I think you're gonna have to put a figure on there. I mean, in other words.
Alderman Kinsey, I would go back to what I just said, that I think that the governing board should be responsible about this and outline as a part of this budget document, where it is we think we should know go in the next 12 months. And we may not know everything, but certainly those, well, even all of us now have been in here for one or two years, would have some idea of where it is we think we should go and how we should be spending that money. I think that's fair. And that, that right there will help us craft a reasonable amount. And then, as the mayor suggested, maybe have a, you know, identified amount of $5,000, so that if Alderman Taylor or Alderman Odom need to go someplace, they're not having to spend it. But I think we should all identify what it is we feel is important, and come together as a board to recognize that, so that we have proper feedback and a better synergism here in terms in terms of our training.
Well, that's why I was looking that we can actually go back and look at the cost of the departments, where they're going and how much it's gonna cost before you commit to a number.
But are we talking, okay, are we talking about the various departments? Are we talking about the governing board? I'm a little confused here, I thought we were talking about the governing board.
Well, I'm trying to be fair across the board, okay? I'm just trying to be, just looking at a number. Well, since you went that way, we can say, well, we can start out with ten thousand dollars. I don't know what training you want to go to, I don't know what you're looking for, I don't know what your goals are in learning the things that you need to do.
What are your goals? What is it that you want to attend to get training on to?
I like to go to the conferences and learn about what the governing body is doing in each city. What type of contacts do you have with the federal government? When we first had our big storm here, I was able to call Congressman Butterfield and we was able to get our check before anyone else. We had to go to Raleigh, I was able to make contact with members of the board along with, Jeffrey had a contact, and I had two contacts, who was able to make these type of contacts. And the more training you get, the more contacts you get, the more you can move on getting things done in your city.
Yes, sir, Alderman Taylor.
As Alderman Blackson, a little too, we, myself, speaking of myself, there's a lot of committees that I am on. And there's a few conferences that I go to. But every year, the conference is different, it's in different cities. So we can't identify when or where they're gonna be at for that year. So we can't do that. The second part to that is, every time we go somewhere, it's open to the public because the city clerk does the paperwork, finance writes a check. So it's annotated where we're going, when we're going, and how we're going. So it's all there in public record. We don't need to, I don't think we need to, in January or in July the first, write down everything we're gonna do till June the third, because if we miss something, then we have to come back to the board and say, oops, I missed that, and I tried to go to this conference. It's open for public record at any time, because we can't write the check ourselves. We have to go through the proper chain of command to get the check ready. So it's available to the public. We're not trying to hide anything, because you can't hide anything. Because it's definitely one, two, three, four, five, six steps, and it's followed by the numbers. So that's not gonna be, that shouldn't be dictated or mandated for us to do that, because no one's has hid any travels. Every travel that I've gone on has been recorded by the city clerk. So everyone know where I went and how long I was there. The second part to Alderman Kenzie was saying, I have a stack of business calls that I've received over all the conferences that I've been going to. As in the military, you saw, you say you call it rubbing rings, rubbing rings with other people, networking. That's the most important thing in life, is networking. Because it's gonna be someone that's gonna be able to help you when you go to these conferences. One of the conferences, twenty-five hundred elected officials from around the whole world, if they can't fix the problem that I have here, no one else can. So going to a conference is beneficial to you, because if your community's running smooth, as I said earlier, you don't need contacts. But some of us, speaking of me, you can deal, you can benefit from somebody that's been through something that you need, you going through. So, and going back to Alderman Odom, well, his comment was, yes, I'm a public servant, that's what I tell everybody. But everybody doesn't have the pockets to go everywhere that needs to be got. We get invitations throughout the year, seventy-five dollars for this plate, fifty dollars for this plate, hundred dollars for this plate, debit times, all over the year, we get asked for money that comes out of our pockets. So we constantly give them to the community. We just wanna be able to give them the knowledge that we obtained when we go to conferences. Back to Alderman Kenzie, I think ten thousand is too much, but thank you. But we need more than twelve hundred dollars. I'm telling you, there's people that's not elected officials get more than twelve hundred dollars to travel a year. I think that's not, not fact. That's not, like Alderman Kenzie, that's not even across the board. If we're running the whole city and somebody's in one position in a section getting twenty-five hundred dollars for track, for training, and we getting twelve hundred dollars for training, and we traveling. So that's my last comment on it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder, Mayor, procedurally, you've got a motion by Alderman Kenzie that can either be withdrawn or maybe restated, just to clean up the record.
Yes, sir, thanks, sir. While you're, while you're talking, if we went back the second meeting in May to approve the budget, and at that time, everything was ready to be approved, except the manager had time to hold some of our similar cities to find out exactly what their travel allowances are with their, with their governing board, would that hold up, that would not hold up the budget? It could be approved with that amended? Or would you prefer to have a clean budget the night of?
What we're talking about is, I don't recall how many days you have to have, your budget is final and it's approved. Two points, one, you can only approve a final budget. What I don't recall is the number of days that it's gotta be finalized before the board adopts it.
I will have to look at that. I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm in. I don't recall either.
And I don't, I try, definitely am not trying to make a motion on behalf of the board, but I think as far as cleaning it up, if we wanted to move forward so that we could get to the twenty-fourth with something, there would, nothing'd be wrong with putting a line item in there, like you're by right, have twelve hundred dollars in your account. And then we have a certain miscellaneous travel pool that we could budget for, say, five or ten thousand dollars, if the board wishes to do so, that you'd have a separate line item that would be voted on specifically at the discretion of the board by vote, and then at that point, if you wanted to do that, we could do that. Whatever the board wishes to do, I'm just trying to find something, we can bring this to you, otherwise it pushes it to June, and staff getting the budget ready for a July one implementation, that's the concern.
I have a comment. City manager, appreciate the comments. I do have one issue with that. And I, I talk, reality. If we still have twelve hundred dollars, and I say, I just came from Congress and City Conference, I spent my twelve hundred dollars, but NCBMO is having a conference that takes five hundred dollars that I'm on the committee to go to, that I'm on the committee and I wish to go to, and I bring it to the board, and the board say, no, I won't go. Correct?
That, well, I mean, that's board's decision.
There you go. So it goes back to, I, sometimes I let things go and I just can't let this go, because you're at twelve hundred, you try to appease us and say, we got this money over here, just sit here to be used at the discretion of the board, but if four members say no, you're not going anywhere until next year, till you get twelve hundred dollars.
I'd just like to ask some questions. Alderman Kenzie, were you thinking of ten thousand dollars per board member to be budgeted for training and travel per year? You said ten thousand, I was clear. And if, whatever, then I'd like to ask Alderman Taylor, what amount of money would you like to see as your personal, use this word, discretion for training and travel?
It's not my personal discretion, it's discretion of the board and the city. When we had the, when I got onboard two thousand nine, we had two thousand dollars, okay? We didn't have any problems at all, everybody didn't have to borrow no money from no one. Everybody went where they had to go and came back, everything fine, the budget ran fine, everybody was fine. Now, with the twelve hundred, people are running to, which is me, I'm gonna talk for myself, is running into issues that, that we need some extra money. And I told myself this year, I'm not trying to hide or cover anything. I'm getting that across the board right now, I'm not trying to cover, everything I do is transparent. But you're not, you're limiting me, and I'm talking just to me, because I can't speak for y'all, you're limiting me to get the proper knowledge, because every year, things change. And to get the proper knowledge to effectively run my community, that I've been elected to run. So, yeah, twelve hundred dollars, and then we cut discretionary funds, so our hands are really tired. But thank God, it's things that happen, gonna happen, but what we talking about now is twelve hundred. We need more to get the information I need and possibly Alderman Kenzie needs to run their, our communities. If you don't use your money, you don't use your money, but allow us to be afforded the opportunity to officially run our city. Yeah, you can come out your pocket, but some of us can't come out our pocket.
But my question is, just give me, just give me a dollar amount.
I just said, when I started, it was two thousand, that's what I said.
Are you saying you want two thousand dollars?
It's his motion, it's not mine.
No, no, I'm asking you, because I don't think ten thousand dollars is reasonable.
We haven't got a second to the motion.
His motion is still on the floor, I can't mention for him.
The motion kind of technically died for lack of a second, but I think it died, it kind of died for lack of a second, because I don't think anybody on the board knew the monetary amount of money that Alderman Kenzie was talking about. I assume he was talking about ten thousand dollars.
Well, the city attorney just made a statement that I can withdraw my motion and I can give it another number.
Okay, would you like, would you like to withdraw that motion, sir?
I'd like to withdraw that emotion. And my new motion would be five thousand dollars.
Per Alderman.
That's correct.
Okay, now, we have a motion that the twelve hundred dollars be increased to five thousand dollars per governing board member. Now, do we have a second to that motion? Now, that motion died for lack of a second.
This is something that I'm not understanding. If you're gonna travel, it's gonna cost money, okay, regardless what you do. It's just like in other departments, they're traveling with money that they don't know how much it's gonna cost, so they give you a number to use for their budget for them to travel.
Alderman Odom.
Mayor, I just want to make a comment on where the twelve hundred dollars came from. If you look back, what was actually, actually spent in FY twelve and thirteen, that would be the year prior to this board coming into office. First ward spent a hundred and eight dollars, second ward spent eleven hundred and forty-two, third ward spent zero, fourth ward spent eight forty-five, fifth ward spent seven ninety-five, and sixth ward spent zero, and the mayor spent forty. So I remember the budget workshop, and we discussed this, and the twelve hundred dollars was chosen to cover the travel that, the most, the highest amount of travel that was spent in FY twelve and thirteen. So there was some rhyme or reason to where that number came from.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we increase it to fifteen hundred dollars and we allocate five thousand dollar line item as a pool of money that would be available to board members at the consent agreement of the other board members for use by any member of the governing board during the fiscal year. Wait for a second.
I'll second that motion, because I don't understand the behavior of grown people that understand that this time of the economy that you have to travel to go learn to do things, I mean, speak up. I mean, you need to speak up as business people. It, I run a business, I've been in business for thirty-seven years, and it costs to run a business, it costs to travel, it costs for me to go to training, it costs money. I didn't win the Mr. America by just looking out the window. I mean, I had to go train, I had to go train with different people, I had to go learn different things. And it's, I mean, I guess you guys don't have to train to learn anything, you just were born naturally with it.
Okay, now, we do have a motion, second, is there further discussion on that motion? See, no further discussion on that motion, we'll start with a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackison.
Alderman Blackison?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Alderman Schavel?
No.
Mayor Outlaw?
No.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White? Alderman Odom?
No.
Okay. That motion failed four and two, is there further discussion on this assignment at this time?
So that, so all the other trainings, that they could just go and do whatever they like to do at any expense, is that correct, board?
Are you referring to staff?
That's correct.
There's line items on all those things as far as the staff does. Alderman Schavel, do you have a question?
I was just gonna say, staff has identified the list of training that they need to attend, certified by their department heads, is that correct? So they've gone through the motion of identifying which things they need to go to.
They haven't identified the cost, or how much it's gonna cost, they went ahead and just put a budget number down.
I'm sure they didn't pick a number out of the air, I'm sure they know roughly what the conference is gonna cost, and who knows what the flight's gonna be.
Well, that's what it comes back to me, to think that this what you think, I'm pulling out numbers out of the air myself. I'm having a conversation here, I'm trying to understand. I don't want you to think I'm trying to argue with you about any point here. It's just that, it seems that when the guys that wants to go learn something, to go training, you want to hinder an individual. That is just my point to view, okay?
Alderman Kenzie, back to that page three seventeen, if that was what it was. If there's anything on there that you wanna make a motion on as far as reducing the amount to twenty thousand dollars, you're more than welcome to do that, and.
Mr. Mayor, this debate here tonight is about funding everybody equally. It's not going singling out anyone. I mean, I just feel that it's not a fair vote here, you know? We're business people, and we need to look at things according to what is, what is right, okay? It's not your personal opinion, it's doing what is right, what it costs, it costs money to travel. You know, these guys have it all through the budget, but, you know, it's being ignored. I mean, I'm only one member, I'm only one vote, you know? And that's the way that you all reviewed it tonight, is that's the way it is, you know, and that's the way you always vote, against whatever we do that is right, that's the way you do it.
I would too, like under item number five, Mr. Stevens, I would like to permit under discussion of fiscal years, only sixteen, seventeen budget. I would like to mention two things, and I know you and I have talked about it. I think that probably in next year's budget, we definitely need to consider roof replacement on the city halls. I mean, never get a second, a second chance to make the first impression, and we definitely are gonna have to look at the clock tower refurbishing, repainting that. Now, did you, did you get a figure on that? I mean, I'm not expecting that you would have a figure on the roof, because that's gonna be very expensive, but what kind of numbers are we talking? Come on up. But I mean, you know, I'll tell you, another couple of years of the way the outside city hall looks, that's gonna be right much embarrassing.
Yeah. I've noticed, Mayor, that, you know, just due to some of the wind and weather events that we've had, we've had a couple of shingles, you know, that tend to be missing up there, you can see the black spots. But yes, I think roof, roof replacement at some point, roof treatment will be necessary. I know that we had identified the clock face as some, some issues over the past several years. It just, you know, when it comes to prioritizing your funding levels and how much to be spent, but I agree with you that, you know, I'm trying to do that right now with the First Street property and the landscaping out there. I agree that if you're going to, if you're going to fundamentally change the corridor and the way it looks, then you need to lead the way, and that's what we try to do with some of the landscaping out there at our First Street building, we need to set the example of what it is. But I do agree with you with the look, but it's a significant cost on the clock face because it's, you know, elevated, and there's special equipment that has to be used with that, and I think, I wanna say it was fifty or sixty on that.
I was thinking forty or fifty, so, yeah. We did have a couple estimates back, I think, last year, Mark Public Works Director, and it was somewhere in that forty, fifty thousand dollar range.
Just, Mayor, I want to make one other statement here. We have a budget, what is our budget though, a hundred million?
Yes, sir, it's approximately a hundred, there's some.
Uh, yes, sir, it's approximately a hundred, there's somebody, one of them, they're up there, so the budget is...
Hundred twenty thousand.
Hundred and twenty million, seven hundred thousand dollars.
And most of all, our staff, like the city manager, they make a hundred and what's thousand a year, right on down, and we only get eight thousand dollars a year, and, uh, we're talking about travel, twelve hundred, you know, people need to know all of those things, you know what I mean? Okay, that's all, thank you, sir.
What was your timetable on that?
For the roof and the clock face?
Does the board have any concerns about the condition of the clock tower? Is that something you wanna look at in the next budget? I don't even know if you, I mean, it's...
I, I, I do have something to say on, on the city hall, it, it's not, uh, the clock tower, but I think it's one of the, some of, some members', um, vision, uh, we had a vision last board that, and, uh, I seen a building that we have recently restored, uh, that have one, and we had it on the table, and then we dropped it off the table, or, uh, went another way, um, we have, everyone up here can get upstairs with no problem, but we have some people that wanna attend our meetings that can't get upstairs without assistance. We talked about an elevator for years, and then, you know, survey was done, the plans were done, and it was put back on the shelf again. We still got people that, in their right mind, that wanna come to the meetings but can't get to the meetings, but we wanna beautify, I, I know, I'm not taking away beautifying the building, but you still got handicapping people that wanna come to our meetings. I think we need to bring that survey and plan back on the table and figure out how we can make it happen, because sometimes when I come upstairs, I'm out of breath trying to get up to second and third floor, so if I'm fifty-seven years old, I'm out of breath, somebody eighty-seven years old is out of breath after second, even Matt and I come up behind her later last time, she had to stop on second, second, third floor to breathe, but we want people to attend our meetings, but they can't get to the meeting because it's on the second floor, but they read in the paper and on TV, we wanna spend money on the outside, but you can't get nobody inside, that's my two cent food line commercial.
Okay, uh, anything else on the twenty sixteen, seventeen budget under number five that the board wants to discuss?
I'll bring that back up, don't think it just gonna die down.
How much was the elevator, you told us before that you looked into it?
We had two different prices, one was here, one was out there.
It was, it was pretty expensive, I think, uh, I'm, if I recollect correctly, it's about seven hundred thousand is what we had.
Seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, and, and I think that's specifically due to the physical construction of this building and the necessary components, if you were gonna do an interior, it, actually it's interesting, because if you look at the old eighteen ninety or eighteen ninety-five plans that were done, um, of the physical building, the elevator was supposed to go in that, you know, open area where the steps are, and, uh, they actually had designed it then for an elevator, so, um, that was kinda what the, what that design, that cost estimate was based on, is having some nice ornate type, uh, decorative and, you know, in keeping with the design of the city hall, uh, what that elevator would be like. Now, there's all kinds of applications, if you want one of those little wall crawlers that comes up, that, that's not in keeping with really the design of city hall, then we can look at those, those are definitely much cheaper options, but, uh, you know, you gotta look and think about the historic and aesthetic nature of what this building is and, and how to apply that.
Is there any way you could, just throwing this out, you, on the first floor, you could put some kind of a equipment that they could sort of view and maybe ask questions from the first floor?
No, ma'am, okay, I just wanna come in. There's a lot of people that's, and I'm talking Alderman Taylor, Second Ward, a lot of want to come out to the meeting, that just can't make it up the stairs. I, as a military saying, I heard when I was in military, where there's a wheel, there's a weight, and where there's a weight, there's a wheel, so you can make it happen if you wanna make it happen. Viewing downstairs is not like viewing upstairs. If I'm gonna view downstairs, I might as well sit on my couch and look at C V, C V, C V T V. I need to come here so I can fill out a petition and walk over here and get to the city clerk and go to that podium and say what I got to say as a resident of the city of New Bern.
I was asking if they could actually talk from downstairs?
Again, I say downstairs, I could stay on my couch. Maybe your community might not wanna get in here, but I know I've had a lot of people that ask, tell me that they wanna get all the way up here.
Oh, okay.
They don't wanna come downstairs and sit downstairs. Most of them, some of them had to catch a ride, why catch a ride if I gotta sit downstairs? We need to see somehow, within the guidelines of historical, to somehow to get the people, all people that wanna get upstairs, get upstairs.
Maybe I was just looking at interim solution, that they could ask a question downstairs, sort of like a satellite conference or something, that at least they could ask a question until we can solve the elevator problem.
This been going on for, a lot of things have been going on and gone on in the past, this has been going on and still going on. Sometimes you gotta close a book on something, as the thing says, the beer, the bud's gotta stop here sometime, so sometime we gotta make it accessible, and we, we can do sidewalks eighty-eight, but why we can't do the city hall? So we need to, you know, do something, might not be seven hundred dollars, sorry, seven hundred thousand, might be three hundred dollars, but we can, we can do something, because I was in the building just the other day, I talked about it at my remarks, that had an elevator going up to the second floor, brand spanking new elevator in the city of New Bern. I know they didn't spend seven hundred thousand dollars for it, but they got a brand new elevator, waiting for somebody to push the green light.
Any other items, uh, on the twenty sixteen, seventeen budget that the board wants to talk about under item number five? Seeing no, we're gonna go to item number six, consent agenda, well, the consent agenda, which is items six, seven, and eight.
Mayor, there's, uh, two proclamations and approval of minutes, I'd like to make a motion we approve of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Taylor, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Item number nine, consider adopting a resolution entering to, entering into a sign pole attachment agreement, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board, uh, the city allows other utilities and communication companies to attach to, uh, their infrastructure, uh, I'm sorry, their infrastructure to its electric utility poles in accordance with applicable safety codes and pole attachment agreements which, with each entity. A pole attachment agreement has been finalized between Fiber Technologies LLC and the city of New Bern, the agreement is for a five-year term, and the rates established will provide increased revenue to the city, there's a memo that's been provided to you by Mr. Rinn, uh, as well as the, uh, rates, uh, depending upon the, uh, certain heights of those poles that they wish to attach to.
It was the board's pleasure.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we adopt a resolution entering to a sign pole agreement for Fiber Technologies LLC.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White? Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Shiebel?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yeah.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number ten, consider adopting a resolution amending the municipal service district street scape improvements project, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the board, uh, the board adopted a resolution on the twenty-eighth of April two thousand and fifteen that authorized, uh, staff to proceed with, uh, uh, street scape improvements within the municipal service district along the four hundred block of Pollock Street. There has since been a request by, uh, the citizens and, uh, business owners interested in the downtown area, in the MSD area, uh, regarding, uh, an addition to that particular project for the two hundred block of Hancock Street, so that would be a project that consists of both the four hundred block of Pollock Street and the two hundred block of Hancock Street. So the attached, uh, memo regards, uh, this original resolution to amend, and, uh, what we wish to do is, uh, include this two hundred block of Hancock Street as a project with the four hundred block, and, uh, this basically will be pretty much like some of the final phases of the original downtown, downtown street scape design, uh, the, the four hundred block of Pollock will be the street scaping, very similar to the pavers that you see around the rest of downtown, the two hundred block of Hancock Street will be the overhead to underground conversion, uh, with a little bit of a difference, some of it will be the pavers, the other side will actually be sidewalk. So, myself, Matt Montane, J R., uh, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Stevens, for, for the viewing public's information, can you separate those two out in terms of the approximate cost?
Matt, do you have an idea? I think it was three hundred and four eighty-something, I think, it was about a seven hundred and eighty thousand total, I believe is what it was.
The four hundred block of, what, the four hundred block of Pollock Street, I believe, was, Jim, I have in front of me, about three hundred and twenty thousand of it, and the remainder of it, which was four, Charlie had four hundred and fifty thousand or so, was the Pollock Street.
Or, no, Hancock Street.
Excuse me, Hancock Street, and a big portion of the Hancock Street is converting the, uh, the overhead power to underground.
Only question I have is, is MSD, the project funds are in place, and I know we're gonna reimburse ourselves and all that, but obviously there's enough funding in the MSD fund?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, I believe there's some, um, legislation being discussed in Raleigh now regarding MSD, uh, that could, um, lead to some potential changes in some of the structure of how MSDs work, and I'd like to make the recommendation, uh, city attorney, um, would agree that maybe our next work session, we discuss the MSD and how that's structured, I believe, by the time we have that work session, um, session should be closed in Raleigh, we may have some clarity around those potential changes.
Mayor, all members of the board, I also go ahead and like, like to go ahead and make a motion.
Was that a motion?
No, just a recommendation.
Oh, recommendation, okay.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution amending municipal service district street state improvement project to include the four hundred block of Pollock and the two hundred block of Hancock Street.
Motion by Alderman Blackiston, seconded by Alderman Taylor, for approval of item number ten, is there further discussion? Seeing no, have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Shiebel?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White? Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
For people that don't know about the MSD, the MSD, uh, project that the downtown merchants pays an extra tax to get a lot of things done, and the city partners with them to do, to get the projects done, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's for people that probably would not understand that move there, so I'm just trying to share.
Okay, item number eleven, consider adopting a budget ordinance to establish an MSD improvements project fund, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board, uh, this item relates to the one you just approved, uh, it is an ordinance to establish a project fund for the municipal service district improvements, the planned improvements total seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars, which represents three hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two, uh, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two for sidewalks, trees, benches, and trash receptacles, and three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of that for overhead electric lines to be placed underground. Uh, the fund for the project will be obtained through, uh, financing, uh, obviously this would need to come before the board, um, with, uh, LGC approval as well, so we will be bringing that to you as well in the very near future that will be applicable to this project.
I would assume that when we earlier did the four hundred thousand, that we established a fund at that time, and do we need to...
I, I don't think so, because we were having, we were in the design phases of that, we were actually doing that with the in-house staff money, uh, this actually, we were actually getting close to having the finalized design for, uh, the Pollock Street portion, um, and then, so we're just gonna add this two hundred block, but then this allows, uh, because of the timeframe with the LGC, you're usually looking at about a sixty-day window for approval from them, at least, so this allows us to go ahead and get the project fund established, and, and that way we can get some of that work already done. Additionally, we're looking at about a sixteen-week, uh, order period, uh, for the lights, uh, specific for the electric stuff, so that's one of the other things we could potentially...
So did the LGC ever approve the prior one? Did it ever get that form, did LGC approve?
I don't think we ever got it to the LGC there, because we didn't have the approval.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You ready for a motion?
You're the alderman.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor Outlaw, that we adopt a budget ordinance to establish MSD improvement project fund for those items that have been mentioned earlier.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Blackiston, seconded by Alderman Taylor, for approval of item number eleven, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White? Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Shiebel?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number twelve, consider adopting a resolution approving a declaration of official intent to reimburse for the MSD improvements project fund, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, this, uh, also relates to items, uh, the last two items that you approved, uh, as indicated earlier, the improvements will be financed through borrowed funds by adopting a declaration of official intent to reimburse the city, reserves the right to reimburse itself, uh, for project expenditures through financing obtained at a later date, uh, Mr. Savatelli has included a memo in the packet, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
So you say we borrowing money, so, uh, we have that kind of money? That mean the MSD, they have that type of money?
Um, they, they do have some cash, but that would pretty much, uh, liquidate all of their reserves at that point, um, I think it's probably advisable for them to, uh, do the financing, that's typically how they funded their projects, uh, in the past, and, uh, given their, uh, given their taxing authority, they do have the funds available to cover that debt.
Mayor, all members, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, adopt a resolution approving a declaration of official, official intent to reimburse for the MSD improvements project fund, as mentioned in items nine.
Second.
Ten, eleven.
Motion by Alderman Blackiston, seconded by Alderman Taylor, item number twelve, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Shiebel?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White? Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, at this time of appointments, uh, starting with Alderman Odom.
Uh, nothing, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman Shiebel?
Yes, sir. I'd like to, uh, thank John Young for his service on the HPC, but he's elected not to serve another term, and in his place, I'd like to appoint Rich Frye, I've already given the information to the city clerk, he lives on Queen Street, he served for six years in the HPC and chairman for two years.
Have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any other appointments?
Yes, sir, I would like to reappoint Dave Finn to the New Bern Fireman's Museum Board.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, any further?
No, sir.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes, sir, I don't have a, I have an appointment to, to make an appointment, and I'm not ready to appoint yet, I have Beechfield Bear for, Mr. Beechfield Bear from permanent community for the fire museum, I haven't yet to speak with him, but I think I'm gonna reappoint him on next meeting, so at this time I don't.
Yes, sir, Alderman Blackiston.
Yes, sir, I'd like to, uh, reappoint Nancy Mansfield to the New Bern Fireman's Museum Board.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, motion carries, any other further appointments, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time we'll go to the attorney's report, sir.
Nothing important, Mayor.
And the city manager's report.
I have nothing, sir.
Uh, new business, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes, sir, I have a few of them, uh, on the seventh of May, we had a unified community cleanup day, uh, I wanna give a special thanks to those that came out, the group that came out, One Group Vision Forward, Burn City bikers, Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity, West Street Christian Church, A P Hatch, Burn and Pollock Street Family and Friends, and a special, uh, thank you to Paul and Deb Niels of, uh, Pollock Street that came out, and also thank Mount Carver for allowing us to use their parking lot, a great turnout, um, great successful event, everybody had a great time. had a great time. Matt, there's a lot of trash out there. We also want to mention, is the street sweeper working? Matt? I'm sorry, this one. Matt?
It has been working, yes, but it did go down last week, and it's been out for about four, probably since the middle of last week, but it's currently being fixed in-house.
Okay, 'cause the reason I asked one of the people that came out to help us clean up, mentioned about it that it was down, and then they said they seen it on Friday.
Yep, it's been down since about middle of last week.
Okay. All right. Is there certain areas, or how many do we have, and what areas do they go in, what timeframe do they go in?
We have a map. I think there's about nine zones they go on. They go on a recycle, cycle basis here, so I think they hit each, each place throughout the city about once a month. But, you know, as far as what that schedule is, I don't have that.
All right, ten-four. Thank you. The other thing, on the same day, Duffin Field had a Duff Fest. It was a great event. Want to thank that Duffin Field Residence Council for bringing the Duff Fest back into the community. Well-attended. Jamari Wallace and his group did an outstanding job. Every, the city, the fire department, police department, Mr. Hardison, John Renn in his office for setting up electricity, whoever set it up, they did a wonderful job. Huge, huge success that they, the weather was beautiful, mayor came out. So I want to thank Jamari and Duffin Field Residence Town and the city for supporting 100 percent. Police department, 100 percent. They were there in full force. Thank you all for everything you got to. On the other, next day, 8th of May, Community Day at Glen Bernie Park. What was that? It was a community day to stop violence in the community. They had myself, Commissioner Sampson, Mr. Corey Purdy, Mr. Martin Beckton, Pastor M. Luther Hill Clinton, AM E Zion Church. We came out and we showed off. We talked, and we talked about stopping the violence. It was a lady there that I had just met, and she walked up to me and said, Alderman Taylor, I was just attacked not too long ago. She had about five or six knife wounds on her body. And this is the kind of stuff that we do not need in our community, in our county, in our state, in our United States. We do not need violence in no community. So Stephanie Beckton is the one that put this program on. Had a great time at the park. Wasn't over nonviolence, but a lot of people heard the message. Mr. Purdy, Mr. Beckton gave their testimony on what they gone through and how they overcame what they gone through. So the message was sent out, and I'm gonna continue to talk about nonviolence, because a lot of people that come where I work at regularly is there for violent behaviors. You can get help, you can get assistance. The street is not where you always got to be. There's resources out there that'll help you find a job, that'll help you find somewhere to stay, that'll help you find some medical attention if you need anything you need. There's individuals like the young fellow, I always say call him a young fellow, pastor friend of mine. There's a lot of pastors in the community. As I spoke on Sunday, almost every corner in New Bern, there's a church. And there's a church, there's a pastor. And that pastor's there to help you if you have any issues in your community or issues in yourself. Approach a pastor, approach a minister. If you don't want to approach the men in the back, they will guide you. There's always an avenue to take other than the avenue toward me. I do not want to see you where I work at. I like to see you downtown, down, down on the streets, walking, doing something productive. The community got programs out there to assist in all your needs. Entrepreneurs, as I was speaking Sunday, and I didn't mean to speak this long, but I told them, everyone out here has a entrepreneurship in their body, whether it's doing hair, doing, putting fancy clothes, or making t-shirts, or some kind of idea inside you that you just need to release and make it happen. And if you have an idea, somebody got a solution to make that idea come a reality. So that's what I spoke on the other day, and I just didn't mean to say all that, but it just came out. So I wanted to say that. So thank Ms. Beckton for putting on a great event on Sat, on Sunday. Mr. Hardison? Mr. Hardison, can you step up to the podium, please? I didn't talk this long, or I didn't. One second, bear with me. You received an award not too long ago. Can you mention that? I just want to recognize, because we got an email that you received some award.
Which one?
The last one. I can't remember what it was.
Masters of Park Recreation Tourism?
I think that's it, yes.
Oh, he thought, oh, I received my degree, and, and master's degree in parks and recreation, tourism, and sports management from North Carolina State University.
Outstanding. Can you say it again, louder? Because I want everybody to hear so we can give you.
I'm officially, well, not officially yet, because I haven't received it in the mail, but Masters in Parks Recreation Tourism and Sports Management from North Carolina State University.
That's all. I, I just want to make, thank you, Mr. Hardison. I just want to make sure everybody recognizes, as the pastor's heard and the people have heard, you want to give them the flowers where they can smell them and see them. We want to recognize people when doing, like the other guy said, and I was in a meeting in Raleigh, he says, we always hear what negative things that we do negative. We need to start recognizing people when they do something positive instead of always negative. They did this, and they didn't do that, they didn't do that. But when they do something good, we need to pull them to the podium and recognize that they're doing good, because it takes a lot to deal with people. But when you deal with people and then do something positive, you need to make sure you recognize them for doing positive, and then that continues to drive on. So again, Mr. Hardison, thank you for that. Yesterday, also, I went to the Fire Museum. They did an awesome job. Bobby Asser and the committee did an awesome job on the Fire, on the Fire Museum restoration, or whatever you want to call it. I toured it. It is, it's wonderful. So if you get an opportunity to go by, he said that the Fire Museum, Fire Museum of New Bern is the second most wanted tourist spot in New Bern to go to. I think Triumph Plaza is first, and the Fire Museum is second. But they did a wonderful job in that Fire Museum. I enjoyed. I was in there for about an hour. And it's a lot of history. They're not finished yet. The second floor is not done, but they have a great plan for that second floor that we really need to reach out and make sure everyone knows that, that we have that there. So again, I want to make sure we give a kudos to Bobby Asser and the Fire Museum Committee. Also, and I'm, two more things. Pray for the families that lost family members in the cattle kennel, that fire that just happened. There was, as news said today, it was 27 dogs that was killed in the fire. And that, and family called those family members. Their dogs are their family members. So we want to send out a special prayer for all the families that lost their animals in that fire yesterday, recently.
Yesterday morning.
Yesterday morning. So we want to definitely keep them in our prayers. And also, happy for Lady Mother's Day, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Members.
All right. Alvin Schall.
Yes, I'd like to thank New Bern Police Department. We attended the Peace Officers' Memorial Day observance, and it was really nice to see Stacy Thouman there, and we honor her and her son, who lost his life in service to the community. And I also want to thank city staff. I'm not going to mention all of you, but you've all been very patient when we ask all these budget questions. And I thank you for that. I know it's been a huge effort to compile all 146 pages. So I thank you for this, and I thank you for your patience when we got down in the weeds. Sometimes maybe we shouldn't have, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. I would mention the, the fire, the police grant, but I'm, Alderman, you're gonna take care of that. We went to the same thing. Do want to mention that Friday at 10 o'clock at the, at the Cunningham Bridge, we're gonna park over at Bridge Port, Bridge Point, and Commissioner Steve Tyson and some other volunteers. We actually have a good time out there doing it. We're trying to find some really high-stress areas of litter, make public awareness of it, actually clean it up, and make steps to make sure it doesn't continue. The biggest thing at some of these locations, the one we did last week, is people are just throwing cigarette butts out the window. It's just, again, we're trying to get a little culture change here. And so anybody that'd like to come out and hang out, we're gonna do some cleanup, and that will be at 10 o'clock, park over at Bridge Point, over across the bridge, and we're gonna have a little fellowship, do some cleanup. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes. This is budget time, and, Mr. Manager, is it any way that we can look at the last 15 years of all the big projects been done in each ward to find out the direction that we need to go to see which ward or which area has been neglected for quite some time to look at that, to see how we can raise the bar in our community? Is that possible?
I don't know. I hate to always answer with an "I don't know," but we will definitely see what we can do. 15 years is a long time, so we're gonna have to go back in a lot of records, but we definitely will put down as much information as we can potentially find. I'm sure we can look back in some accounting of, of things that we've done, and obviously, you know, to go into ward-specific stuff, we would have to look, see where those projects were done, but we, we most certainly can try our best, if that's the pleasure of the Board.
Is it that we can take a ride out through the city and just look to see what's neglected and what needs attention infrastructure-wise?
Are you asking to take a ride?
Yes.
I'll take a ride anytime.
Yes, yes.
Yep, we can definitely do that. I'd be more than happy to. We can, if you would let me know specifically which ones that, or if you want it to just be me.
The whole city, I want to look at the whole city.
Okay.
You know, I've just been receiving phone calls about, you know, I understand y'all doing the budget, and what are y'all gonna do about the discussed areas? So I said, well, I can, you know, make inquiry about that and see what we look, find, and what needs to be done. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, didn't we agree that we would gain consensus, a project of this undertaking to go through 15 years? Is that a fairly major effort, that we would gain consensus among the board, that we all agreed this was a good way to go? We did, right.
I have no issue with anybody riding with one of us. I think that's what they should do.
Right.
If staff feels like 15 years' worth of record retention and combing over files that is not something that's readily available, then I think that's something we need to discuss.
I mean, we, we can give it our best effort. What I can't control is the record retention and record keeping of people that were here. I mean, I've been here for five years. What I don't know what happened 10 years ago before I got here is, is beyond my control, but we most certainly can try to get that.
Let's gather down with it. Let's do 10 years. That's be, I think that's a little easier.
Okay.
Okay. Alvin Taylor?
Just real quick, I want to definitely, don't leave out Pastor Ronald Scott for coming out and doing a prayer for the city, and, and also staying. I asked him if he wanted to stay, he can stay, and that's, he looked like he was enjoying it. So again, Pastor, thank you for everything and for your prayers at all times. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Odom?
On the, the financial request, Mr. Sabatelli, if you could include in that the tax revenue by ward for that same period, please. I'd like to appreciate that. Mayor, you and I attended the Firehouse Subs presentation today, and I think the chief would probably be the best one to articulate that process, because I know he had some of the staff members he wanted to give some kudos to for actually helping achieve that grant. So I'll, I'll ask the chief if he wants to give us a summary, please.
Thank you, Ms. Del. Yes, we were fortunate enough, after getting approval from the Board last meeting, to be presented a check of over $16,000 to replace one of our K9s. And how we got there was an officer, you know, a lot of towns, we, we don't really appreciate the value of our line officers. Well, one of our officers was happening, I guess, he did the Firehouse Subs and noticed that they had a grant program. And he came back and he said, "Chief," he said, "would you mind if I tried to write a grant to get my K9 replaced?" I said, "That's an excellent idea." I said, "Work with our grant coordinator, because we do have a grant coordinator that kind of helps us put things in order, and let's see what happens." And sure enough, the officer sat down, got all the documentation, made the justification, had it reviewed by the grant coordinator, signed off on me, and, and the rest is history. So, you know, we can't say enough for the work that Officer Salin, Officer Salin did on, on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alvin Schall.
I'm sorry, I forgot. Chief Boyd, we went to Raleigh and we saw the, I'm trying to pull it up really quick. The K9 team from New Bern Fire Rescue received the keys to a donated K9 vehicle during National Arson Awareness Week. And the vehicle is donated as a joint project of the State Farm Arson Dog Program, Caliber Collision, and Recycled Ride. Fire Marshal Danny Hale accepted the gift, and Darby the Dog was first to ride. So I just want to congratulate you on that. I don't know if it's an honor or a great thing for New Bern that we need an arson dog, but thank you.
Okay. Do we need a closed session tonight, sir?
Mayor, we do. Staff, I need you for two matters. One is an update on the city of New Bern versus pre-hospitality pursuant to 143, 311A3, and also to discuss potential sale or exchange of real property pursuant to 143, 311A5 and A3.
So, second.
Motion and second for approval for closed session. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.